Okay, I'm gonna start the meeting. Apparently Leslie couldn't make it and thank, thank you EJ for showing up at a last minute. We'll have the pledge allegiance and I'm gonna ask you, EJ, to do the pledge. Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Beckencourt?
Here.
Commissioner Curro?
Here.
Commissioner Setalo?
Here.
Commissioner Sabathia?
Here.
Commissioner Casey?
Here.
We have five present.
Okay. I guess the next thing is posting agenda. Approval of posting of agenda.
I'll move to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Five zip. Item number three. Approve posting of the agenda.
I think we're on four now.
Pardon?
I think we're on four now, the public comment period for not on the agenda.
Apparently nobody in the public, is there anybody online?
If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, you can press star nine on your phone or the raise hand icon on your screen. No comments.
Okay, we'll move on to business items. General business, non-hear, um, hearing items. Approval of minutes. Uh, I have a comment on, on the minutes. I already discussed that with Jennifer and it's about, um, uh, on the Gilmore project. She stated, or in the minutes, it stated that it was, um, LAFCO has, uh, well, you explain it Jennifer, you could probably do it better than I.
It's so camouflaged. That the area in the, um, included in the application was a, um, island in the county is what it said. And it should be island in the city. To clarify that it was surrounded by the city but unincorporated territory. So just a rephrase in the minutes is what he was requesting.
Okay, do you wanna approve the minutes with those corrections?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So is it appropriate for me to abstain since I was not here in?
Okay.
At that meeting or? Okay, so I'll go ahead and, I mean, are we just doing the minutes right now? Do you do each consent agenda? No, but we're just doing the minutes right now? Okay, so I'll go ahead and abstain since I wasn't here.
Okay, thank you.
And good catch on that there, Richard. That was a good catch. You caught the error in the minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Let me see, item five two. Service contract with Marina, Santa Cruz and Tuolumne LAFCOs. Go ahead Jennifer.
Got it this time. This, what is proposed is a shared services contract that was originally come to by the Marin and Santa Cruz LAFCOs. The proposed contract is included in your packet and we do have online the executive officer of Santa Cruz LAFCO to answer any questions regarding the contract. Tuolumne LAFCO is also a member and I believe Santa Barbara was considering it. I'm unsure of the outcome, um, but they likely approved it, I would think. So, the idea being that, um, because I am the only staff, that this would provide depth in staffing levels if need be. Particularly given the change up in executive officers and turnover that you've experienced in periods of time without an executive officer, that this would provide backup services if necessary. Also, if say I did not have the capacity to do something, um, you know, that required a little bit of extra time, that these LAFCOs could be leaned on and their staff could be leaned on, um, in those situations and circumstances. In any case, we do have the executive officer online if you have any questions for him. He's a wealth of knowledge, so I highly recommend directing any questions you might have to him.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay. With this, I know we had concerns last time about, um, it, do we pay a fee, uh, to be a member? And I think we got that clarified that that was a no, right? And then do, we're, we're only charged for the services that they provide. And the rate was where I, I was going through and I'm just a little confused about how, is that part of the contract? Cause when I read it, I, I didn't see exhibits and I'm normally looking at exhibits for the rate sheets.
Okay, let's ask Joe. Joe, are you available to answer these questions?
Good afternoon Commissioners, uh, Joe Serrano, Executive Officer of Santa Cruz LAFCO. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Uh, so great question. Uh, and the short answer is that the rates vary based on, uh, the LAFCOs. So for Santa Cruz LAFCO, we have an hourly rate, uh, that we have, which I believe, uh, for the executive officer, uh, and, and don't quote me, but it's around a hundred dollars. And, and the intent here is, let's say San Benito LAFCO reaches out to Santa Cruz for assistance on reviewing, uh, protest hearing notice. That's not gonna take time, maybe it'll take me half an hour to review. That would be pro bono. So the intent of this, uh, shared services agreement is if it goes beyond five hours, if it's a larger project, then we would, uh, track our hours and based on, uh, the LAFCO that's providing services, our hourly rate, we will then send an invoice to the LAFCO that's requesting, uh, assistance. Now, I'll give you an example that just happened, uh, two months ago. So Marin LAFCO and, uh, reached out to Santa Cruz and asked if I could facilitate their commission, uh, workshop. And, uh, I looked at my schedule, I said that I'm available. So we worked together to determine, okay, how much is it gonna cost, cost Sam Marin LAFCO if we, if we use your, your expertise? So we drafted out an outline, it's, okay, it's probably gonna take me twelve hours in total. Meaning developing an outline of the session, driving to, uh, Marin County, presenting at the workshop. All that, we kind of determined what the cost was and he looked at it and said, okay, I, it's gonna cost me X amount if I use Santa Cruz LAFCO or it's gonna cost me twice as much if I go outside for an outside consultant to do it. So it made sense for Marin, but we did that work before we even agreed to do, uh, to provide the services. So that's something that we would like for other LAFCOs to replicate. Uh, and, and I, I just wanna be clear, this is not a new idea. LAFCOs around the states help each other out all the time. We're just taking a step further of putting it in writing. So when you need an expert, uh, that is gonna take time, instead of trying to teach, uh, an outside consultant what LAFCO is or what, what a sphere is or hire a temporary aide or new, uh, employee and then give, have that steep learning curve, you can just reach out to your, your neighboring LAFCO and they're, they're the LAFCO experts. So that's, that's the intent here. So that's a long-winded response to your question Commissioner, but to, to make it short, it varies on the LAFCOs, adopted fee schedules and that's, LAFCO has a policy which outlines our hourly rates and we would base it on that, but we would coordinate with San Benito LAFCO before we even move forward to sure, to ensure that, uh, it, it's cost efficient for your LAFCO. So hopefully that answers your question and I apologize for going on and on.
No, Joe, that was exactly what I wanted to hear and I knew you were gonna say it cause I asked the same question at Cal LAFCO when we talked. And so I just wanted it on the record that there is a process and we are, we pre-approve it. It's not like you just randomly bill us for your time.
Exactly.
It's very structured, so I really appreciate the, the long, uh, answer there. Thank you.
I would like to make a comment on, on this, that we, um, this LAFCO was dysfunctional for about six months because of illness and, uh, Monterey stepped in and helped us. This is before we had this kind of, uh, function, so I am all for it, uh, so that we can help each other out. Do I have a motion?
Can I ask a quick question?
Oh, I gotta open.
I'm supportive, but I just got a question for our executive director cause, you know, being on the committee when we were reviewing the apps and choosing you, I, you know, one of the selling points for me is that you're part of a firm, you've got a partner, you've got admins to help you. So you wouldn't go to this, uh, this, unless you were over what burdened? And, you know, like if you weren't available, your partner might be able to come in or is that not the case?
That's exactly the case, that, uh, generally I do have staff, um, that could provide support services. This is in the case of something that was beyond, um, our capabilities or, um, something that's, um, more, uh, requires a higher level of expertise or something like that. We do have a GIS contract with the county, but an example may be GIS services that might be able to be provided by a LAFCO, um, or, or something else along that caliber line. And I would certainly, um, ask the commission, um, first.
I thought so, I just wanted to clarify, I totally support it, in fact, I'd like to make the motion that we approve.
The other thing that I would wanna make, and I think was very clear in the document that, um, they are not an employee of us because this LAFCO got stung pretty hard. On, uh, they were an employee and, uh, they resigned and anyway, cost us a lot of money, so we gotta always make sure that when we have somebody come to work for us, that they're an independent contractor and that would be the same, right?
Correct.
Okay.
They would not be considered staff.
So I make a motion that we approve?
I'll second.
I have to open it to the public first, right?
If you'd like to make a comment in, eh, on Zoom, you can press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon. No comments.
Thank you. Now you can make your motion.
I make a motion to approve.
I will second this and very supportive.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Just a follow-up comment is that as part of our policy update, we will have to approve some kind of, uh, fee or hourly schedule, um, to be included as an attachment or something like that to that effect.
Well, wasn't that stated in the document?
I think the hourly rates are up to each of the LAFCO, member LAFCOs. So it just depends on the LAFCO in their adopted hourly rates.
So that has to be determined now?
At our future meeting, we will.
Oh, at a future meeting? Okay. Okay, so I can go on?
Can say, thank you Joe for participating and being available to answer questions.
Oh, okay.
Great, I'm glad you joined the party. Looking forward to working with, uh, this commission and your staff when needed.
We're gonna go on to five point three seating special districts on LAFCO. Jennifer?
So at our December meeting, um, the commission directed, uh, to send invitations to the special districts, um, to participate in the discussion that we'll be having here today. It was originally set for your February meeting, but, um, we pushed it off until today because it was forgotten. But the question is, um, about fifty percent of LAFCOs across the state have special district representation on them, which makes a seven-seat commission. Right now you have a five-seat commission with only representation from the cities and county and a special district member. Should you add special district representation, that would be an additional two, um, regular representatives sitting on LAFCO or commissioners and then an alternate. The way the process works for special districts to join, LAFCO today is being asked whether they would desire to send an invitation to the districts. The districts then, it's only independent districts by the way, not say county service areas that are dependent on the county. So only independent special districts will be asked to conduct a, a vote in essence. Approve or deny a resolution on whether they desire to, um, be seated on LAFCO. If we receive a simple majority of yes, um, resolutions returned to LAFCO, they would then be seated, um, and representation would be determined based on a nomination and election process that would be run by the executive officer. So that's the process in a nutshell. So what you're considering today is whether or not to send a formal invitation to the special districts to consider joining LAFCO. Also to bring, um, new commissioners up to speed is that by law, special districts, if they are seated on LAFCO, would be responsible for one-third of the commission's budget. And the way that that is determined by district is their ratio of their revenues to the total revenues of all special districts in the county. So if, for example, a district had revenues of twenty thousand, but the combination or, um, some total of revenues across all special districts is two million, they would be paying that one percent of the budget. Calculations were included in your packet as well, based on the most recent numbers I had regarding revenues for fiscal year 2021. But that was used against LAFCO's current budget because the current budget was, um, increased significantly from the previous years. So I wanted to give a more accurate representation of what the estimate of what they would be asked to pay would be. So, um, I'll open it to any questions now.
Do you wanna do public comment first or can I go? I go, is that okay? Okay, so I'm looking at the list of the special districts that you have and I am not an expert of all the special districts, but isn't Aromas Tri-County Fire District also? Cause it's, it's three counties, is that not qualified as a special district for LAFCO purposes?
I, yes, it's still a special district, but, um, I believe the principal county is Monterey.
On that one, I think you're right. It's not us, it's not us, so that makes a difference? So it would be Monterey that would do the, okay?
That would consider them as one of their special districts.
Totally makes sense, I just didn't wanna leave anybody out.
Understandable.
That was the only question I had, thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a quick one, just, I don't have the agenda in front of me, can you remind me who the districts are again? Can we run through that?
I have it up here, do you want me to just read them off? Is that there again? Okay, uh, let's go right ahead, do you have it on yours?
I do have it right here.
Go right ahead.
Um, Aromas Water District, Pacheco Pass Water District, Pacheco Storm Water District, which we do not have, um, estimates for because they just recently became operational. Um, San Benito County Water District, San Benito Health Care, Healthcare District, San Benito RCD or Resource Conservation District, San Juan Batista Cemetery District, Sunny Slope County Water District, Trace Peños County Water District, um, and that's it, that I have on my list.
What's the number?
Of how many? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Right.
Nine.
Was the San Juan Cemetery District on that list?
Yes.
Okay. I go to a lot of meetings and, um, I brought the subject up most of the time to the executive officer. And, uh, San Benito County Water District, didn't seem to be interested, uh, neither did, uh, Sunny Slope Water. The only one that seemed to be interested would be, um, was, uh, Pacheco Pass, uh, Flood District, they seemed to be interested. But, um, should we maybe send you or myself out to each one of the districts to try and explain to them why they should or, I mean, come to this meeting and, um, the thing is basically, I don't understand why they the thing is, basically, I don't understand why they'd want to get a board, I know Jennifer, you put in, in the thing that they would have a voice at the table. But to me, they already have a voice. Because if we were going to dissolve a district, we have to go to them, or if there's nobody there, then we go to the Board of Supervisors, I believe. And then the process goes from there, so I know we would like them to come aboard, because it would help us with our budget. I mean, the county and the cities, but I mean, that's, that's my comment.
So as far as having a voice at the table, I would just say that there are certain processes that the commission can initiate that would greatly affect a special district. For example, dissolution. This commission can initiate and approve a dissolution regardless of what a special district says. So you can hear, they can come up and tell you if they are for or against dissolution of themselves, but the commission is not obliged to vote in whatever way the public comes up to stand at the pedestal and talk about. So having two special district representatives, however, would balance the vote and the voice, giving these nine districts over which you have jurisdiction of voice at the table. So thinking about, LAFCO has power over the two cities and then the nine districts. That, that is the power that you wield. And because of the ratio, a majority of your decisions are going to be regarding these special districts, right? So that's why I would say they deserve to be able to, you know, have representation here. If so many of your decisions are going to be impacting their possible consolidation or dissolution.
But another concern of mine is the special districts, i.e. the hospital district, I think, had the most income, or so when the two people that are getting on this commission, they sure wouldn't want Aromas, the San Juan Cemetery District to have that vote. Correct? It seemed like to me. So the people that paid the most money would want to be representative on this board. That's where I, I think, but, so how does that, i.e., an example was when we were talking about shutting down the Pacheco Pass Water District. If San Benito County had a vote on it, they didn't, the next option was for them to take it over. And or, I mean, the county, I think, would have to give it to whoever they thought needed it. So what you're saying, that they would have a vote and they don't want it, so they would try to convince this board not to do that. You see, you see where I'm, I'm trying to weigh the different. So I, I don't, I mean, if I was to cho- chosen to go and talk to the board members, I would rather not do that, because I'm kind of prejudiced against it. And then I'm also feel for this board, because it would help us financially. Go ahead.
So I apologize, I don't know a whole lot about this, but I want to make sure that I understand this, so it sounds like this is a letter that gets sent out to the nine special districts, right? Then each special district has the ability to opt in or opt out? Am I understanding that correctly?
They're in essence voting, so all we need is a simple majority, which then would mean all special districts would join.
Oh, okay, so if you get the majority of the special districts.
A majority of the special districts, so each, each jurisdiction does a resolution, they need the majority from their district to do the resolution, which you have a sample of what that resolution would look like. And then if the majority of all those resolutions were to join, then they would join, and then they would determine who the representatives would be, it's not up to us.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood it completely.
So we just need five approved resolutions to return, and then all of the, all nine would be member agencies to LAFCO.
So a question on that, so if, say, five do it and the other four don't, the other four become encumbered financially? Yeah, that doesn't, especially the small districts, that doesn't seem very fair or appropriate, that, you know, others who might have some more reason to want to belong. I don't know, I, I have some misgivings, and I don't even know how to voice them, but I've seen so many things, I know we always talk about taking off our hats and putting on our LAFCO hat, and I've watched some meetings where people have difficulty doing that, and it concerns me a little bit, adding two more voting members, and how people's, how well they can adapt to some of the things we have to, you know. Some of the stuff is pretty heavy that we have to deal with, so it concerns me, that's all, I guess that's the best way to say it. Just misgivings about it, generally.
And with what was just said about the clarification of, so it would encumber to smaller districts, it also goes the other way, if, if the smaller districts decide, yeah, this isn't that much money for us, we'll opt in, because we want a voice. You're making the larger districts have to pay for that decision. So that is altering where I was standing on this, so I appreciate the clarification. Because it's one thing to use this, I was looking at this as a way to reach the special districts and educate them about LAFCO and the opportunity to have a voice, but the burden part is bothering me. And I agree with the adding more people with the hat problem. There are a lot of hat problems, and so I am just going to completely agree with Commissioner Casey on that.
I just, I don't know how to say it.
It's a hat problem, and we don't need more hat problems, we have enough problems with just the five. So in looking at this, you know, because I'm all about, I want to engage with the special districts, this was a great opportunity to start a conversation with them. Maybe instead of this, it's more of a, hey, can we come and do a presentation for you about what is LAFCO and how, how we can help you, would you be interested in us presenting to your board or something? And I, I would love to do something like that, just because I'm all about the outreach to the special districts.
Go ahead.
So I'm just wondering, is it at all possible to have, you know, this big kind of LAFCO meeting where you could invite all of these special districts to maybe explain what you're thinking, and then give them an opportunity to kind of hash it out? Like, if they collectively did it and said, you know, if they all had a chance to, you know, without you guys, but just with amongst themselves, and, you know, well, wait, we can't really afford that, or hey, I really want to have a seat at the table, I think this is really beneficial. And then them collectively deciding, rather than them feeling like, well, all it took is a majority, you didn't care what we felt about it. I'm almost wondering, is there an opportunity to make something like that happen? I don't know, that's it.
EJ, you got any comments?
Yeah, my, my comments are in line with yours, kind of reading the tea leaves beforehand, before we, we ask them to do something, if there's, you know, seven or eight, especially of the ones who are putting more of the bill, who are all kind of in agreement or disagreement, that might ease our minds on which way to go a little bit. But also, may I understand the, Commissioner Casey, your comments about, you know, bringing more voices in and things like that? It, it could get harder, but if they, if these special districts decide they want that representation, I think it'd be, it might be, it might be good. But maybe getting a little bit more information and seeing kind of how they collectively feel about it before, you know, tossing it off.
I've got a comment, first of all, I think they have until the fifteenth of May to get back with you, to with their comments, whether they want to join us or not, is that correct?
Um, yes, that was what was originally set, but, you know, that's changeable.
This board, we have to give them that opportunity. We can't just say, no, we're not going to listen to you. And does this body have a vote in any of this?
Well, right now, today, the vote whether to formally invite or not invite the districts, so you could table that matter.
I thought we already did that.
What was voted on was in December, was to invite the districts to take part in the conversation, which was supposed to occur in February, but none of the special districts showed up. I think, though, that a little bit more outreach in the form of personal invitations to general managers, et cetera, could occur to try to promote something in the manner of what you're talking about, to create more conversation, would definitely ensure that we have better participation than zero. So that's what was voted on in December, was to invite them to take part in the conversation.
My thoughts are, this LAFCO is an entity within itself, outside of the Board of Supervisors, outside of the city of San Juan, and city of Hollister, this is an independent entity, and I think we should give them the chance to say yea or nay, it should be up to them.
So you said you did send out invitations, but nobody showed, is that, so we don't even know that they even have an interest? Or did people respond and say they couldn't make it?
I received zero response, so I don't know.
I'm not so sure that the people I talked to, like the San Benito County Water District, I don't think they even put it on their agenda. The director just said he didn't think his board was interested, so I don't know if it was presented to them.
When the invitations were sent, did it also have the district allocation estimates on it?
It did.
Okay, because I'm just thinking, like, if you got it and saw, oh my gosh, this is going to cost me, you know, X amount, or whatever, you'd want to make sure that you have a seat at the table to make that decision, and so I think that, I agree with you, Richard, I think that the best thing to do, in my opinion, would be to offer it, but maybe instead of just sending the letter, maybe doing more outreach to try to get them to kind of all come and, and listen, maybe try to almost do what you did in February, again, at a future date, and and maybe it's not the best time of day, I, I don't know, but figure out a time where we could get everybody together to really kind of talk and figure this out. And then, maybe then after they've all heard that, they've had a chance to talk amongst themselves, then send the official letter invitation, but I would be all in favor of absolutely inviting them to the table. Make that decision.
I don't have a problem with inviting them back, but I don't want to force something down their throat either. I know a lot of the commissions have a lot on their agendas, and they just may not be a top priority for them to join yet another thing. You know, maybe they're not as concerned, you know, I don't know, I don't know what their thinking is, but the fact that we got no responses bothers me a little, but, you know, we made the effort to do a personal invitation to them, so we could try again, but if we don't get adequate response, I think just let it be, because, you know.
I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to agree with that, and the reason why is, if we didn't get responses, that means, in my mind, they're already saying they're not interested. If there were responses or concerns, there would have been some engagement, but I do think, let's do one more round of, of an outreach, either via phone, maybe even just a phone survey to a main person, saying, hey, we sent this, we've tabled the item, because we didn't get any response from anyone, we just want to make sure that you really understand that you're saying you don't want to go down this path. Because we would hate to start the process and have it force something upon others.
And also, we do have other things, and I don't want to spend too much time and energy at meetings on this if they're not interested, so.
Yeah, the only comment I had was, I, I agree with that. Second reach out, hey, we sent something, didn't get a response, did you mean not to respond? We're still not getting feedback, that, that's an answer in and of itself.
Jennifer, I always talk to the executive officer about these things. Should I go to a person that's on that water board, and talk to them individually? Because I think that's wrong, because I would be going over the executive officer's head, is the way I look at it.
It's hard to say. Certainly, the board members would be the ones that would be voting on the resolution that would be on the table, so.
So, Richard, just from, like, my perspective, as an elected, I probably would go and talk to another elected, I probably wouldn't start, and I don't know that that's right. It's just kind of the way that I feel like, as, you know, I would call EJ sitting on San Juan Batista and have a conversation with him, I don't think I would probably call their city manager. And maybe that's not right, but that's just my thought process of sitting here as an elected, and so I don't know how you all feel, but that's definitely the way I feel, is it's, it's board member to board member type of a thing, so, just my two cents.
I, I somewhat agree with that, because if you have, I'm not saying that they do, but if you have an executive or a managing person that doesn't even share with any of the board member that this was an opportunity, that, that's concerning, you know, at least one board member should have been approached, you know.
Now, what if we addressed it to the chair of each board, as opposed to an ED or a, you know, administrative person, because they're the ones who bring things to the agenda, they're the ones who do the discussions, so, yeah. Maybe we could try that.
I, I like that, but I even think, let's, let's just stir the pot. The elections office has all of this in a database, all of these board members are in a database, they could send that to you electronically to be able to do a mail merge, send it to every board member, so everybody's been informed. And then if, if that pot doesn't stir it, then bye-bye. We tried, and, and I think the benefit of this outreach is twofold. One is educating them about what LAFCO is and how it affects them, but also use it as a, how they can use it as a tool and what the municipal service reviews. I'm all about outreach and education on this, because in working with special districts, they have no idea that this is an option.
Richard, real quick, I'm wondering if another thing that might be really helpful for them to hear, is when I looked at the map of all of the the LAFCOs that have the special districts with a seat at the table, if there's maybe some stories or success things that they could share that might, like, oh, I didn't think about that, that might be really advantageous, rather than just looking at it as a number, but here's how kind of collaboratively you can work together, or how they were able to do certain things in different communities. Sometimes just having those examples are sometimes really helpful, just to see how other people are utilizing it and how it's helping them and the benefit.
And who did you send the letters to, just the San Benito County Water District, period, or?
The general managers, or The general managers, or, um.
General manager.
Generally.
So, okay, what's your opinion on this, EJ?
Communication, far out, reach who we can, um, and see what comes back. It, it, it's hard to have a further opinion on most of this until we get some, some sort of response, um, so, casting a wider net is fine with me.
Yeah, I think when it comes to general managers, they tend to look at their bottom line, and it's like, oh, this is gonna take more away from what I'm trying to work with, so, whereas a board might feel differently about, you know, participating, so.
Boy, if we do this, uh, boy, nobody can say that we didn't try.
And we didn't, yeah, you can't say we didn't tell you, I like the idea from Commissioner, um, Tuttelo, the map is very telling. Maybe with the letter, pay, uh, I think it's slide number four of the presentation, have that. I, I love it, 'cause it says, are you, are you seated on LAFCO? Well, apparently not. So, I think that could be, that could be educational, and maybe they would even reach out, 'cause they all have these parent, like, associations and groups that even connected, maybe they'd reach out to, like, a Monterey, or a San Luis Obispo, or, you know, one of our neighboring counties and say, hey, you're on LAFCO? What, what do you use LAFCO for, you know, could be a good conversation.
Hey.
Actually included the entirety of the presentation when I nailed it originally, too.
We thought they were being hacked, so they didn't open it.
Probably, it was probably overwhelming.
Anybody else have any other comments?
I, I do have a couple of questions, um, or clarifications for the commission, um, so what I'm understanding is, um, I will reach out to all, um, board members of each one of the districts, um, and send a formal invitation of sorts to participate in the conversation. My question is, do we want that to occur at some future meeting, or do we wanna set up, um, another kind of workshop, um, for that conversation to occur, where we can perhaps present about LAFCO, um, and what it does, actually, and then have the conversation, um, with the special districts present, possibly to occur just before a LAFCO meeting?
Oh.
At which time you could consider this item.
Is, is April the fifteenth, uh, one of our meetings?
No, I believe it happens earlier in April, um. I was thinking that May might give me a chance to do more outreach, to get more bodies, um, here, let's see here. Our May meeting is May ninth, oh, is it?
Oh, I'm on April.
Our April meeting is April eleventh.
No, but the, the original letter, you gave them till May the fifteenth, I believe?
To respond and provide the, um, resolution back.
Why not keep that same, if they're interested, then we'll go from there, if they're not, we.
Okay. Um, so our May meeting is actually May ninth, that was just a due date for the resolution, so, um, if we wanna consider it at a regular meeting, it would have to be on the May ninth schedule. Um, and then the question is, do we wanna do a workshop beforehand, or just address it during a regular LAFCO meeting?
Hmm, I know it's asking a lot, to do a workshop, um, how are we doing budget-wise, okay?
Oh, yeah, just fine.
I'd be okay with a workshop, I'm a little concerned about the date, only 'cause I have a new grandchild that's supposed to be born beginning of May, so I may be in Ohio, but by the ninth, I could be back, I don't know, I've been asked to stay for a while, so, since this is their first, so, um, workshop sounds good to me.
I like the idea of a workshop and kinda sandwiching this, and I would be more than happy, 'cause I'm, you know, the LAFCO kind of cheerleader. I'll go in and be a total cheerleader to support just the educational process.
Yeah, but wh- what if nobody shows up?
Well, if it's a workshop, we can cancel it, but we won't have to, you know, have it on our agenda, take away from our regular meeting, so.
So.
If, if nobody shows up, there's your answer.
You're right. So I, I think on this, we're gonna, I, I'd like to make a motion to, to table it, and, and direct staff to conduct a workshop and further outreach, as we've discussed here today.
Sounds good, I second that.
Oh, we didn't do public comment, I apologize.
We always.
Is there any, any public comment?
There is on Zoom.
My apologies.
You've been unmuted, please state your name, you have three minutes.
Thank you, this is Carson Clower, um, I, I would be very surprised if most of the special district committee members know about this at all, and I would also be very surprised if most of them have a firm understanding of what LAFCO actually does, so I think that your additional outreach is a great idea, and that it may even behoove staff or commission members to go to their meetings and make sure that they've discussed it, whether it's on an agenda item, or speak during public comment. Um, I, I do think that expanding LAFCO to seven members would be very beneficial in insulating against people who get on LAFCO and then do not take off their political hat, whether it be county or city, so, just something to keep in mind, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
No other comments.
I'm gonna bring it back to my motion of tabling the item, but directing staff to do outreach with a workshop that we might even invite others potentially to, it doesn't have to just be special districts to do a little outreach, maybe some of the CSAs might be interested in this, and then, um, uh, the additional, um, outreach to the, uh, board members.
Can I second that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vizep. Thank you for your guys' comment, I really appreciate it. Um, item number five point four, application fees and compensation updates.
Okay, uh, so, in front of you, you have my, um, first attempt at calculating, um, an updated fee schedule. Um, the fees must be set, um, just to recoup, um, regular expected costs, um, and I say that just because, um, generally, these proposed fees are in line with other LAFCOs and what they're charging, um, and I compared purely just to make sure that they weren't exorbitant in nature, and that my estimates were, um, fairly accurate. But that being said, every LAFCO will have different costs, so, um, we shouldn't base a decision on what the other LAFCOs are doing or charging. Um, so, in front of you, I broke it down to estimate how many hours approximately would take of my time, of legal counsel time, and then the direct costs that would be expected, that would have to flow through LAFCO, um, for things like copies and postage, um, for public noticing, um, as well as noticing in a newspaper, um, whether it's once or twice for a public hearing. Um, I do know from recent experience that posting a public notice for a public hearing is actually quite expensive. Um, it was about three hundred and fifty dollars, uh, to run one public notice and one paper for one, one day. Um, so, at the current application fees as they're set, uh, that takes up almost a third of, of a basic annexation application. So definitely we need to raise these rates in order to recoup at least those direct costs, and then, um, at least a portion of, um, the costs for my time to the commission, and I say at least a portion, because there are certain actions and applications that the commission is recommended to promote, um, things such as, um, the island annexation, right? Um, the intent is that the, um, because it's an island, and the commission's aim is to promote annexation of these islands, that the proposed fee is a little bit lower than what the actual estimated cost is. Um, and that would just come out of the commission's budget. Um, the other one is a, a single parcel fee, just making it a little bit lower, because, um, you know, those single parcels are, actually are not quite, um, time-consuming to process. Um, the other one is the, if there's, um, a public safety issue regarding sewer or water services, uh, well runs dry, septic system failure, um, that certainly, uh, we don't want it to be exorbitant in order to address an annexation, to be able to deal with those issues. So, you have the current fee, the estimated cost, um, and then the proposed fee next to it, and then a breakdown of, like I mentioned, um, my hours, legal hours, direct costs, and then the, a portion of, um, the applic- application fee must be directed to the county surveyor's office in order to, um, confirm maps and their legal descriptions, and I met with the county surveyor's office to determine if the, what we have currently, which was five hundred dollars, um, covers the cost to provide those services, and, um, as I expected, they said no. Not even partially, so, um, we did come to the, um, consensus that we would ask for a one thousand dollar deposit to be directed to the county surveyor's office, um, with any difference to be paid upon completion of that review, um, and, um, that LAFCO would not move forward with processing the application until that difference had been paid to the county, to ensure, um, one hundred percent recouping of the costs for providing that. So, um, that's all I have right now, you are not voting on this right now, this was purely, um, just, uh, for discussion, um, and then consideration at your next meeting.
Angela?
Well, our fees were really, when you put in your wording, I think the word you used was woefully inadequate in your, uh, item, uh, after looking at your very detailed analysis, and seeing that in some situations, we didn't even have a fee? Uh, it, it is a little concerning, though, 'cause I'm thinking of our very small, very low-budget special districts, CSAs that are on a shoestring budget, the, the municipal service review going from none to, so this is deposit only, applicant will be charged for full cost recovery. Are these for special requested municipal service reviews, or are sort of municipal service reviews?
These would be municipal service reviews that are, um, required to update a sphere of influence, um, because of an application.
Okay.
So that's what would trigger the municipal service review. Not our, we already have the work plan for the next five years, that we'll be conducting the state-required municipal service reviews. So generally, they should be up to date and won't require, um, this kind of work for an application, um, unless something comes for one, let's say, a, a, a district that is four years down the road from its municipal service review, if it, um, causes that schedule to, or timeline to be, um, accelerated, then we would charge, um, for that municipal service review.
Yeah, and I saw that you had that it was, you know, required for sphere of, and then it went into i- influence, and it, it kinda disappeared the update, so if that could just be a little clearer there, so that it doesn't make, when we are out kinda educating about municipal service reviews, they're not like, all of a sudden, you just want money from us, now you're coming after us for twelve thousand, you know, five hundred dollars, and we didn't even ask for this to be done. So I just wanted to make sure that we weren't putting an undue burden upon, even though the burden is on us as if we put, I'm gonna put my, my other hat on for a second, the burden is really truly on the cost that is being adhered to by the county and the cities, so. I, I just, it's, it's a very weird dynamic and circle of events, where you're doing something for a special district or something, and you're not necessarily charging, so it's just a weird dynamics of, I'm learning as I go here.
You got a question?
Yeah, I, so, in reading all this and reviewing it, I, I kinda had the same feeling, and it came back to what, what triggers the, the event, or, or the fee, or the cause, and it's usually, you know, it looks like it's something, some action by that special district, whether they're small, or, or, or whatever it is, it's an action triggered that, by them, it's not an action triggered by LAFCO, and if they're triggering an action, and we incur cost because of it, it only makes sense to me that they, they pay that direct cost. And, and, you know, the original fee schedule was twenty thirteen, it's, it's about time to update that.
I totally agree with the update, and the woefully inadequate cost, I completely agree with that, too.
Yeah, I don't, um, disagree necessarily, although I mix feelings about it, just 'cause, I know, we do, we do cover the budget, we do plan for it, so, some of the things, like, uh, you were mentioning, um, EJ, about actions that they're taking, but municipal service reviews are required, and they're required every five years, and it's like, here's your bill for twelve thousand dollars, just seems a lot to me, and I'm wondering if things that are not, uh, brought in by a group, or whatever, or some specific protest action, if those could be looked at differently, I just, do we have to recoup all of our expenses, or, you know, I always struggle with that, 'cause we deal with that at the city. Um, are you trying to make your, you know, your department completely, um, budget neutral? And it's like, is that what we should be doing, I, I just think sometimes it's borne on the backs of, of others, and, and it, it has impacts to the community, so I always struggle with that, so.
Yeah, these would be the MSRs that are triggered purely by application, so, um.
So if you don't for the regular ones?
Right, correct, so, let's say the city wants to annex some territory that is outside of its sphere of influence. Because we haven't conducted an MSR for the city in, um, several years, and the sphere of influence hasn't been updated, an annexation of that sort would trigger a requirement for an MSR, and that's when this, um, application.
Sorry, I misunderstood, I thought just generally, but, so it's only if we're triggering it, or somebody, a group is triggering it for some reason, then, okay, go for it.
And I, I totally agree with that, I just think in the, when we actually are presenting the fee schedule, when it does become final, that that is very clear, so that, 'cause that's exactly what I took.
Yeah, I just jumped there.
That's where I went, and I'm like, oh, we can't do that, so I, I appreciate the comment.
Yeah, there were a couple of cut, cut-offs here that I'll, I'm sure show up.
You're done? Uh, is, uh, Plower on, still online? No? Okay, so, I'm gonna go to public comment, and then I'm gonna make my comment.
There is no public comment.
Oh, okay. Well, my comment is, um, the MSR is mandated by the state or by LAFCO?
By state legislation, the government code.
Well, shouldn't they pay?
Well, that would be ideal, wouldn't it?
State mandate.
Yeah. Uh, that's my point, um. Yes, uh, we should be refunded for, uh, or compensated for our, but I think the wrong people are pa- paying, you know, if it's a state mandate, they should pay. Yeah, or at least fix the fees. Uh, but, uh, anyway, that's my comment, uh. You got, uh, this is just a update, so we don't have to vote on this?
Um, I'll bring it back at the next meeting for a vote, um, I just wanted to make sure there was the ability to discuss, and then I can adjust based on any of your direction, um, and then you can consider and vote on it at the April meeting.
What you're asking us is if it's, these fees are too much, or not enough? Is that what you're asking?
If you have an opinion either way, yeah.
Or go along with what you suggested. Or go along with what you suggested. Okay.
In any case, um, I do want to say also though that, um, there are cases where LAFCO's will, um, consider a cost reduction for an application that is in the interest of the public, the best interest of the public, for something like, um, a fire district consolidation, right? You want to promote a consolidation like that. And when you're talking about each step having to be charged, whether it's an annexation and then plus a dissolution and then maybe a sphere change, those become costly. Um, when you combine all of those fees together, it could be like fifteen thousand dollars. Um, so some LAFCO's will consider a reduction in those fees, um, if requested by the applicants before submitting their application. Um, so I could put a caveat in the fee schedule that, um, in those cases of public interest, that, um, the applicant, uh, can submit a request for a fee reduction. If the commission desires that.
I would support that and I would also support having these proposed fees posted on our website so that there's more, uh, visibility to the public.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I had comments specifically about the fee schedules. Let me find my right tab. Sorry. Um, most of them look like they're between your, your estimated cost and proposed fee. There's either exactly the same or, or some change. There are two specifically that are wildly different. Um, much lower, the, the island fee and the to obtain sewer services. I, I know you said that you were looking to not, you, you made a comment about not having people, you know, having to foot a, a huge bill in those things. Can maybe dig a little bit deeper. Or a little bit further explanation as to, to how you came up with, with, like, you know, in one case, one of them's twenty-five hundred dollars cheaper and one's about a thousand dollars cheaper. How did, how did we come up with that delta?
Um, so in the case of, first of all, the island, um, but there was actually, uh, very little in the way of rhyme and reason, except for the fact that an island annexation will generally be, um, initiated by the city. Um, so you'll have a city, the city as an applicant and they're footing the bill. Um, for the other, you're gonna have a private applicant, um, that is, um, coming because they're, they have an issue with water or sewer already. Um, that's already a costly issue and that's why, the reason for a, a, a greater, um, reduction in fees that I'm proposing. Frankly, it's up to the commission. That was just the idea at the time.
Uh, Jennifer, um, in islands, uh, we've been working on that for quite a few years, um, and we have, um, sixteen, we've probably fixed twenty-some islands since I've been on it. Commission. It's very difficult because it's up to the individual island, whether they want to join the city or not. And a lot of it is, uh, one that I know of is, I think there's seventeen houses on that block and they're complaining about the roads. The county isn't fixing them alongside the rest of them.
Pardon?
Anyway, if, and they, they're on sewer. And for them to annex into the city, it would cost them, I don't know, thirteen thousand bucks. And you talk to individuals, no, I don't want to annex into the city. The point that I'm trying to get at is how do you, how do you close those kind of islands? Uh, you gotta give them some kind of incentive to do that. And that basically has to come from the city, wouldn't you think? And we don't want to charge them a bunch of money, cause that's what we're trying to do is and close the islands. So that's one of our objectives. Um, I don't know what the answer is, but, um, I think we should keep the, those folks' fees at a minimum.
And just one other thought, it just struck me while you're saying that the cities would pay the fee. And it just strikes me a little amusing that we also pay the budget for LAFCO, we all do. And so we're paying the budget and then we're gonna charge ourselves for the, something we already paid for. So should cities and counties be paying a fee for something that they're already paying for? That's just kind of, you know.
You're absolutely right. Okay.
Can I make just one quick comment?
Sure.
Um, so when we're talking about the islands annexing and having a fee for that annexation, if we have a fee but have in our policy that the commission can waive that fee to encourage an annexation or something in our policy or procedure that allows us to say, look, here's a great, we're, we're even waiving our fee to encourage you to annex. But if you have no fee, they're like, well, what, what are you waiving?
We could promise to pave the road and then.
That's, that's, that's a whole nother hack conversation.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
You guys are putting your.
Hats back on. Yeah, I know. We're just teasing.
Okay, um, you need any more information, Jennifer?
Um, no, if there was any other feedback, if, if you thought some other, um, proposal fee for those two would be more appropriate, um, let me know.
So you're gonna bring that back at the next meeting so that, uh, we etch it in stone, right?
Correct. And I'll put it up on the website for transparency.
Did you catch both of those, uh, processing fee schedule? And or app, is that the next one you're gonna go to or did you go through that?
Well, I just included, the other one is, um, the old fee schedule, just so that you could see what it looked like. Um, but that's already also included in the proposed application fees under current fee. So.
Okay, so we can go on to item five point five?
Yes. So five point five, sorry, I didn't organize here.
The strategy planning, work planning, pri- prior, prioritization.
Right. At our last meeting, the commission directed that they'd like to, um, have a discussion regarding how, um, staff time is being used and, used and prioritize, um, the various things that are on staff's plate, um, to create kind of a, a strategy or work plan. Um, so I, I was a little bit at a loss as to how to organize this so that it could be a discussion item. Um, I came across this prioritization matrix that allows you to, um, insert, um, a, a rating for each item based on various assessment criteria. Um, there are twelve tasks that are shown here and I did come up with five different assessment criteria. Um, the tasks are the MSR work plan, um, which we've already established. So it's kind of adhering to the MSR work plan. Um, processing applications, um, in the status worksheet. Um, comprehensive update of policies and commissioner handbook. The developing proposed and final budget. Uh, seeding special districts. Update of the application fees. Couple of these are, we are close to finishing. Um, update of website with the agency info and resources, kind of as a clearinghouse regarding the special districts and cities, their websites, their, um, contact information, that kind of thing. Um, an update of the application forms, that is also predominantly finished almost. Um, agency outreach and education, which we discussed today. Updating the contract with the county, um, we are in the process and legal council has put together a draft contract um, to kind of, uh, solidify the relationship between LAFCO and the county. The last one is from twelve years ago. And, um, LAFCO has definitely become more independent since then. So the idea is to, um, get that in a, a, a good, solid contract. Shared services contract, which you actually already approved today. Um, and then developing some kind of strategic plan, um, that discusses these various work efforts and, um, kind of the indicators of what is successful completion of each one of the work efforts, right? Um, that's just kind of a best management practice, but, uh, I threw that in there as a consideration. Um, the assessment criteria I chose were urgency, is there a timeline that has to be adhered to? Um, or does it need to be addressed immediately because other, um, items, um, are dependent on it? Um, importance and guiding the future of LAFCO efforts. Uh, enhanced efficiency and reliability, um, compliance with legal requirements. And then, um, does it support LAFCO's legislative intent? So I'm open to commission feedback. I ranked each one of these things, one through twelve because there are twelve tasks, um, under each criteria. And, um, if you have other assessment criteria that you think should be taken into consideration, ultimately at the end of my first attempt at it, the highest priorities are comprehensive update of the policies and commissioner handbook, uh, developing the proposed final budget. And the reason for that is because there's a, a legal timeline. You'll have to adopt an, a proposed budget in April and you have to adopt a final budget in June. Um, it's required. Um, and then adhering to the work plan, the MSR work plan, um, because that is also a legal requirement. So from there, I open it up to commission feedback.
Any comments?
Number one, I love weighted objective tables, so. Easy way to make a decision when, when you can't. Um, did you cover, uh, for those kind of top three, uh, completion percentage?
I have not.
Okay.
Put that together, but I can tell you the items that are almost complete, um, as of this date right now is, um, update of the application fees, um, upon adoption, that'll be complete. The updating of the contract with the county is, um, about ninety percent. I just need to review and put it in front of the commission. Update of the application forms just need to be uploaded. Um, so those three are very near completion already.
Okay. And do you have confidence that these three higher priority things can get done by their, by their due dates? Or do we need to give some special attention to those?
The MSR work plan is a long-term, five-year process. So, and right now we're, um, on schedule. Uh, but we're just in the middle of the first year, five years. Uh, the comprehensive update of policies in the commissioner handbook is one, um, that was identified as a top priority. Um, but it does need to be, um, given more focus, uh, over the next, um, few months in order to get any good work done on it. And then, um, developing of the proposed final and final budget, um, that will just have to be done, um, by those deadlines.
Angela?
I agree. You, you, you got my, my comment immediately is I love matrix. I love being able to see this in a, in a, in a display form of what your thought process is on how you prioritize. Um, what's amazing is how much we, we're getting done on the low end of the list. And so I totally agree with the number one being the comprehensive update of policies and a commissioner handbook. Um, and then of course you have to do the budget and then we all, I think, agree MSR is our, our biggest main focus. So I like how it landed, even though it, it, I would never have thought of doing it this way. How the outcome is right where I would have been. So, thank you.
Mia?
Um, I liked it too. I like the weighted. It, it makes it easier for us as we're trying to figure out. Cause you know, you know better than us which, which things have the most priority. So I like it, um, you know, an estimate of hours. I know MSR is a five-year, you know, but what time you think you need to complete, you know, like is this a one-month thing? Is this a six-month thing? Might be, I'd add that somewhere. But other than that, no, it's good.
Wendy? Okay. EJ, you done? Okay, um, this is only, uh, we don't have to vote on this, right?
Right, you do not have to vote on this.
Then we can move on to, oh, public comment?
No one on Zoom or Chambers on a public comment.
Okay, I guess we can move on to item number six, one, executive officers communication. The executive officers may make a brief statement, I guess.
I will keep it as brief as possible.
Announcement about LAFCO's activities for information only.
Uh, so yesterday I participated in the governance committee MSR presentation that I had mentioned at our last meeting and did a presentation on the MSR and its status and then the various draft options, um, that we have come up with thus far. The governance committee, it consists of the San Benito County Water District, Sunny Slope Water District, um, uh, as well as Board of Supervisors and City Council members and the two city general managers. Um, am I missing anyone? I think that was everybody that was there. Um, and, and in case it posed a particular opportunity to have good discussion, um, with each one of these agencies, some of which have not, um, been responsive for, um, setting up some kind of conversation. So that was a great opportunity and allowing to receive feedback to flesh out some of these options that are going into the MSR. Um, as far as the MSR, which is the next item, I do need to meet with ad hoc committee. Um, I will have an admin draft available in about three weeks that I'll be providing to the two of you. Um, and then we can go over the options and the other findings that are in the report. Um, and then I'll bring it back to the full commission once the ad hoc committee, um, has given me the go-ahead. And I'll do a presentation here for the entire commission. Um, so depending on how long that takes at the ad hoc committee level, you'll all either be seeing that in April or May. Either one. Um, and also at some point that admin draft will be released for public review. Um, for at least a twenty-one day review period, but longer if the commission directs that. Um, ethics training, um, I did receive from Commissioner Bettencourt interest in ethics training. I do know that you completed it as did Elia, correct? Um, I am assuming that the supervisors and the city council members are taking part in their own ethics training as required. Okay, um, so.
Yeah, Ellie and I went to the planning commission ethics committee and we got certified.
Okay, great. Um, so if, um, you could provide ethics training certificates, um, when you've completed ethics training, that would be great. And I will keep a folder of those just to make sure that they're on hand. Uh, Form seven hundreds obviously are due April second, actually. So I know it says first here, but I think it's the second that they're due this year. Um, so if you could provide a copy to me as well as whoever at the county that you generally provide a copy to.
Do we have to provide them to you? Cause I thought that the county, through their online system, puts them forward to the different.
If, if you add it as, uh, one of your agencies, yeah, multiple agencies, it will be sent to you directly. But if you forget to add it, that's when it doesn't get sent.
I forgot, but if you don't get one from me, let me know.
Okay, sounds good.
And thank you for the reminder, cause I completely forgot.
You're talking about the seven hundred form?
Yes.
Yeah, that's by April first.
April second.
I do it online. Okay.
Um, and then finally. Um, and then finally, we're kind of in the middle of a website update. Um, with me, a few changes. There were some issues with when you search for San Benito LAFCO, the agricultural commission shows up for some reason first, but I think it has been corrected. Um, as of, at least today, I, when I looked, it looked like it had been. Um, and, uh, so the new app, um, applications are to be uploaded there. Um, and eventually, like I said, all of the special district and, um, information. Um, but if there is anything that the commission desires to have on the website to make it a good resource, um, for these public agencies, let me know. And that's all I have.
Okay. Do we have to have a public comment on that? No? Okay. Six point two, commissioner announcements and requests for future agenda items. Any, Wendy? EJ? No? Mia?
Only comment was that I was at the governance meeting yesterday. So I was a little surprised that I had to ask the question like, wait, we haven't seen this yet. But it, it was actually a good opportunity because of the parties that attend that meeting for you to get that out there and get some feedback, so. There's a lot of options and that was very surprising to me, so you'll, you'll learn a lot, Richard. Our ad hoc, I, there's a lot to it, so I'm excited to hear more, so thank you for all that hard work.
You're done? Okay. Um, I was gonna request to put on an agenda about me getting a laptop, but I might be too old and too shaky for it, so, uh, I'm not gonna wanna do that. Um, uh, I sure appreciate, um, you showing up, both of yous. Um, most of the time, when a, one of us is absent, the alternates don't show up. But that's why, uh, we're working on the handbook so that maybe you'd rather, uh, you would rather like to come to the meetings and instead of just sitting out there doing. Our interaction was, I thought, very well. You know, um, and it looks like you did your homework too.
I will give a, a huge shout out to the, I love going through the LAFCO agendas. Um, often either on my phone or tablet, so easy to click, um, so it makes it easy to stay well informed.
Okay.
Kudos.
Thank you. Um, no future agenda items that you can think of? Okay, I can't either. When I get home, I'll think about something that I should've put on, but right now, no. Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, for all your hard work. And Vanessa.